Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, civil with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening and welcome. If you have not attended a Planning Commission meeting before, this is a public hearing, and I invite anyone who thinks they might speak or want to speak to please stand. All right, just repeat "I will" at the end. Do you promise to tell the truth to the best of your ability? If you do, say "I will." All right, you can be seated, thank you. All right, so we will go through our role in our cases. And anytime during the meeting, if you are the person directed to come up to the microphone, you'll first give your name and your address. And I will direct you through when it's your time to speak. And if you are an applicant, you could also be invited back up to speak, to respond to anything that was said by a previous citizen. So with that, if you have any questions or comments, always direct them to me, the chairman, and we will make sure we get answers for you. With that, I will have you call the roll, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Nesbit. Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Ashbaugh. Commissioner O'Neil.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
And Chairman Wiley.
Here. I'd like to start off by saying we have a couple of birthdays to celebrate today. So with thanks for their service and a very happy birthday to Virginia Ferguson and Eric Ashbaugh. We are not singing, just to save time on the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any comments?
Chair, I'd like to pull case 2532003.
Okay. Are you gonna make, uh, we're gonna pull that? And so the motion has been first to...
Second.
And second, to accept just the meeting minutes out of the consent agenda. Any comments there? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and the motion passes six zero on the meeting minutes in the consent agenda. And Commissioner Nesbit, you wanted to pull the case?
Yeah, on, uh, this is for staff. On staff, on 2532003, on that final plat, did they make any changes that, from the preliminary plat?
The change is that there was, um, four additional lots were added north along that corridor that were outside the preliminary plat area.
So that's what they added was four, uh, one, two, three, four?
So that's the reason why we're asking for that to be called, uh, plat 1B, because, so they're not messing up our numbering throughout the phases that we had already established.
Okay, and everything's good, what, uh, everything's good to go ahead to the final plat then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So Brian, to clarify, phase one, two, and three were already approved for additional lots, so we now need to approve phase 1B.
Right.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved, I have a first?
Second.
And I have a second? All right, any additional comments? All right, please call for the roll.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and case number 2532003 for the final plat at Little Blue Estates. Plat 1B passes six to zero. We will move on to our public hearings for case number 2512501, rezoning PUD for 1316 South Osage Street. And I'm not sure which one of you staff is giving this report. All right, Mr. Harker, please.
Okay, so this is case 2512503. The applicant is, uh, Michael Jones for Render's Hope and, uh, daycare and day school. The action is to rezone a property, a church property that is owned R6 to R6 PUD and approve a preliminary development plan that's associated with that. So this is the notification area. You can see the, the church property is about a quarter of a block south of South Side Boulevard, between Osage and Spring. It's an existing structure, existing parking lot. So all the properties surrounding it are R6. It's in the middle of a single-family neighborhood of single-family residences in an area that's, um, that the comprehensive plan envisions as remaining residential established neighborhood uses. So as far as the proposal and the property characteristics, of course, the current zoning is R6 as well as the previous labels for a single-family that existed all the way back since 1965. Portions of the church, there's a number of phases that you can tell it was built over time from the 50s through the 1990s. Northex Properties recently acquired the church and plans to lease it for two uses, one for a church congregation that's taking over that location and Render's Day School and Daycare Center that will operate on the site as well. The day school will utilize 3,400 square feet of the 19,000 square foot structure for its seven classrooms. The structure in the parking lot are approximately 87,000 square feet on a multiple-lot property. The building lies at the northwest corner of the lot, so most of the green space, the large lawn area, is to the east. And then the paved surface, parking lot area that dominates the other half of the property is mostly along the south part. The surrounding neighborhood, again, is entirely single-family residential in nature, mostly bungalows and small ranches. The homes date from the 1920s all the way up to the 1960s and are in individual vegetated lots along these two quiet residential streets. As far as the analysis goes, um, this is consistent with the city's strategic plan. The goal from the plan is to, quote, "achieve livability through quality neighborhoods." As far as the comprehensive plan, this site, along with properties in the vicinity, again, is designated as residential established neighborhoods by the city's comprehensive plan. The related tool and policy would be to identify areas within established neighborhoods where MFR development would be appropriate. Subarea plan, this area is not in an area of a subarea plan. Zoning, as noted previously, this is a single-family zoning area since 1965, permitted in R6, of course, are like single-family homes. And then civic uses like churches, schools, home-based daycare, government uses, parks, whatnot. The proposed PUD portion added to the R6 zoning, and that should say, not high-density residential, but it should say, "single-family residential planned unit development." That classification would allow for this childcare use in addition to the other allowed, a single-family uses. In other words, allowing more than 20 children at the center. The property is, or the parking lot on the south part of the property is via, is visible by a driveway off Spring and off Osage Street. At the southwest side, the lot is broken by two green medians. So I counted there are 109 parking spaces, seven handicap spaces, in fact. So they could easily, uh, they don't have a van-accessible parking space, but they could easily convert two of those handicap spaces into the needed area for van, one van-accessible handicap space. As far as analysis goes, uh, the existing building facades and footprint are not going to be expanded or changed, so there's no new construction that's anticipated. The daycare center will use approximately 3,400 square feet of this 19,000 square foot building. It's gonna have seven classrooms for 49 students. Four of the classrooms will be upstairs and three are downstairs in the basement. There's a 1,200-square-foot kitchen, and this will be, and need to be reviewed by the Health Department during the building permit process. There are also, there's also a storage area and basement rooms that I mentioned earlier will serve as a storm shelter. The applicant has provided us an evacuation plan, which I will show momentarily. There are no apparent historic or architectural, or archaeological issues with this property. Utilities are available and present on the property. And, and this property is not in a federally designated flood area or within our stream buffer zone ordinance areas. Given no new construction on the property, except for the children's fenced play area, no additional landscaping would be required as part of this PUD. And the city does not have any additional capital improvement projects planned in this area around this structure. So here is the aerial site plan. It's kinda hard to see, but, um, right on the east side, the building going out into the green area there, that would be a fenced area that would be the play area, potentially, for the children there at the center. This is the floor plan, showing, um, the, uh, different, um, rooms. You got Fellowship Hall as well as a few other smaller rooms, both upstairs and in the basement that would be used for classroom spaces that are marked with the C. And then you've got the bathrooms that are identified and would be there. And this is the evacuation plan from those locations. So this is looking from Osage, um, northwest toward the property across that big lawn there. And this is in the interior from the south, looking across the parking lot to what's really kinda the main entrance and access to drive up to this building. This is, uh, some of the housing that's across the street along Spring. And this is the other direction, this is what's on Osage, east of the property. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning and preliminary development plan with the following conditions. This case will authorize the property's use as a childcare center, as, um, zoning classification of childcare facility that permits more than 20 children. Number two, a six-foot solid fence shall be provided on the northeast side of the property, which roughly about 2,500 square feet in area, to encircle the children's play area. With the approval of this rezoning, PUD, um, the applicant shall apply for the required building permit for this fence. Number three, a van-accessible handicap parking space along with the required signage will be provided. And four, a 1,200-square-foot kitchen will need to be reviewed by the Health Department during the building permit process. So that concludes my presentation, I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, Brian, so the reason doing this is that it's gonna be a PUD so they can do their children's thing. My question is, since it's not gonna be a church-owned building, or is it, is it a nonprofit organization? Do you know, anything like that?
The, um, I'm not sure whether someone from Northex Properties is here, but, um, they're the actual owners of the property, and they, they basically have leased the property to a congregation and moved there to operate their, their Sunday, or their congregation there and this other use.
It's a business now, we're turning it into a business, that's why I'm trying to figure out, 'cause legally, I guess it can't be a business there, 'cause it's R6. And now you're trying to run it as a business, 'cause they're buying the property, they already bought the property, now they're gonna lease it out, so it's like a business. So I don't know if this is proper classification we're doing here, because now it's legally, it's gonna be a business for renting out. That's why I'm trying to understand the pro, the reasoning here. I mean, I can see a nonprofit organization doing it, but if they're doing it for a profit, I don't think that's probably quite correct.
Brian, if I can, in residential areas, we can have churches, schools, et cetera. So that, would that be why this particular zoning is the request?
I think the, the purpose is the number of children.
It's the number of children, I understand that, I understand that, but I'm still trying to get at, is that it's gonna be ran as a business now, because they bought it to make money to rent it out. See, that's why I'm getting at. I don't think it's a non, I mean, I don't know if it's nonprofit or not, so.
I mean, they were, they're doing that for the church purpose anyway. That's what they are, they lease out religious facilities for churches.
So is it a nonprofit organization or profit organization? Well, let the applicant say.
We'll have to the applicant decide.
All right, any additional questions for staff? All right, I'm gonna invite the applicant, if they're present, to come on up. All right, and please state your name and your address.
My name is Michael Jones, 1316 South Osage Boulevard.
And what would you like us to know about this project?
Well, to answer your question, we are a church, nonprofit church. NorTech acquired the building to sell to us. And so we are under a lease-purchase contract for that facility. And so we're removing our church congregation there firstly as worship, but because we have operated a preschool prior, we're also transporting our preschool program as well. So the church itself is nonprofit that has a preschool program. So that's the purpose of why we're going this direction with the rezoning.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question.
Yes.
All right, what more should we know about your project?
Well, um, so we're, as he foresaid it, so our church is in a replant process. NorTech purchased our previous building, was on 3625 Blue Ridge Boulevard. We're now in contract to buy this new property, and so we're just replanting our church congregation on the Osage location. And so with that comes our preschool program, which has served children who have been displaced because of homelessness, foster care services. So we have a partnership with Mark's Organization, the Mid-Atlantic Regional Council, to support kids for early learning, uh, transition to kindergarten. So our school deals with kids who are displaced because of foster care homelessness, and so we serve that demographic holistically and then other community persons within the area. So we're looking to have about 49 students throughout our school year. That will be between the ages of, it says, my wife, it says, two, no, Lord, no. Zero, sorry, zero to five years of age, so the preschool, early learning and then preschool ages. So that is our process. So again, we are a church that has a preschool program, and that's our purposes of requesting a rezoning.
All right. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Hey Chair.
Yes.
Now, what if you get more than 49 students? I mean, what if you need more? I mean, do you have the space? Do you look at growing or not?
We're only contracted for 49.
I know you're only contracted, but I'm thinking future. I mean, will this zoning take care of that if they, they wanna go up? That's what I'm, I mean, it's a great, great thing you guys are doing, but I can see hundreds of kids probably, and not just 49. That's why I wanna know if this zoning's gonna help you or not, or if we need to look at something better for you. I mean, I don't know, if you guys talked about that, if that's, that's what you guys are looking for in the future or not?
No, we're not, but the reason why, because we have another facility that operates off of Raytown Road that houses a larger program. Our specific program is just to deal with a specific group within our community.
Okay, so you gotta, you gotta have another location then?
We have other locations, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you all.
At this time, I'll invite anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this case to come forward. And once again, sir, I'll just remind you to state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is David Bailey, I live at 1331 South Osage. I'm right across the street from the church.
Okay.
I've enjoyed that church, I've lived there 25 years. And when I heard about the news of, you know, of daycare coming in, a new church coming in, I thought, well, that'd be great. But then as we go on, you know, I hear the things with the playground outside. It's a very busy street, very busy neighborhood anyway. We get a lot of vagrants, a lot of crime over in there. I call the police all the time, it takes them forever to show up. I was glad to see somebody bought it, so maybe they would do something with it. Well, they've held, you know, a couple of small churches in there, has held some church in there. And then they was, these folks was having a deal stating what they're doing there. And once I started looking at it, I was like, I don't think this, you know, it's a business. You know, if they're gonna be profitable off of it, just say if they decide to move or sell, then it's already rezoned for somebody else to bring another business back in there to be profit. And the place is already, I really wish it was homes, but the place is already a nuisance and a trouble, and I would hate to see that going forward. They talked about, I actually went over and talked to the folks, and, and they said they wanted to, you know, get some input and maybe do some things, maybe security, fencing, stuff like that. But when you go to add a playground in there, which is right across the street from my home, you get a lot more noise, you get a lot of baby nuisance that you don't want. We all love kids, we all got kids. But things like that is what I look at. I've lived there 25 years, and, and I just wanna be happy continuing my life there. I don't want something to go in, they, they sell the place, somebody else comes in, it's rezoned, you know, and there's a lot of, you know, maybe things going on that, that shouldn't be. That's a neighborhood, it's a, it's a residential, like you said, from 1965, you know. To my knowledge, there's never been a daycare in there, there's never been any other business other than a church. And that's what they zoned those, that for back then in that neighborhood was for a church. It's not for business or, you know, for more foot traffic to come in through there. On Sundays is one thing, everybody goes to church on Sundays, we all go somewhere. But daily traffic, the nuisance at night, people jumping the fence, getting into the kids' play area, you know, it's all over our neighborhood, I think we all know that. And I'd, I would hate to see our neighborhood be run down even more. Not to say this is gonna run it down, but there's always, always that opportunity that this could happen. And I don't wanna see that in my neighborhood. Like I said, I live right across the street. I'm all for taking care of these kids and getting daycares, but when it comes to running a business out of it, that's what I, I disapprove of.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? All right, would anybody like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone like to speak in favor? Okay, I'm gonna invite the applicant back up. If you would like to have any response to the gentleman's concerns with noise, et cetera. Maybe one of the questions would be, what would the hours of the daycare be?
Okay, to address the concerns, firstly, we have just entered the property recently in the month of May. Prior to that, NorTech had leased out the property to other congregations that were there. Since we've been there, we've done some cleanup of the actual property, which was underkept prior to coming in. Our fencing would be, um, well over the distance between the homes across the street and where the kids would play. They would have specific times, we're there from 6:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. with a one-hour midday playtime, when most people are at work in the first place, so there would not be any type of evening or early morning disturbance for the kids being outside. The other thing is that we are providing cameras, we're putting cameras installed around the property because of our protection of liability and insurance purposes, uh, to ensure that the property is kept. Right now, uh, there are, there is constant traffic in the building during the day because of our offices that will be there for our church purposes. But in the evenings, we'll generally are shut down, no, no one's operating during the time when people are coming home from work. And again, we can't control what happens on the outside, the city itself, but we can't control with the process of monitoring our own property and have this secured. We have cameras that are being installed that we can actually be able to see what's going on throughout the day from our apps at home. So if there's any disturbances, we can actually call and have those things reported. Secondly, uh, prior to moving in, we had neighbors complaining about cars being parked, abandoned on the property, which we have, uh, recently contracted with the tow company and with the city to have cars removed. And there's been posted placards on the property now, that if anything's abandoned, that it will be removed. So we are doing our best to be diligent about securing the property, maintaining the things that we have in our control. We all wish we can keep anyone, any unfavorable element from anywhere. You can only do your due diligence, which we're doing to, to secure that property. So it is conducive for our school program, because like the gentleman said, we want a, a safe community, we want a respected community, and so in order for our program to be successful, we wanna do our diligence to make sure we secure and protect the integrity of the neighborhood as well, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for him before he says? Come on, back up.
So I'm looking at, where's, I guess I don't know exactly, where's the fence going? Is it going on Osage Street, or is it going?
It's on the Osage side, so when you come out the building, the original structure of the church, there was a, which is now is the main sanctuary. The other portion that were constructed around the back of the, if you look at the bigger section there at the top, that's a gym that also houses the, uh, the kitchen and some classrooms in that area. But to the right, maybe your, yeah, to the right is the original church structure. If you look at the top there, to the right, there was a black square line where the fencing has been outlined, so it's right off the exit of the classroom area, which is required for state. That the kids are going out to play, they have to exit from the building into a direct enclosed area. So if you look, it's probably, um, more than one and a half times spacing between the edge of the fence and the edge of the property and street, which across the street is the housing, I believe. The gentleman's speaking of where he stays. So there's quite a bit of space between the street and the, uh, the property and fence line. But again, we're talking, again, an hour during the midday, when most residents are not even home, and then we're talking the school closing down, again, 5:30 in the evening, prior to most residents returning home.
So is the fence gonna go across the whole grass area, all the way through the parking lot?
No, not at all. It'll just be, it's a, it's a space allocated, it's 2,500 square feet, that is right outside that door entrance. So it's kinda stops, uh, maybe about 10 feet before the middle of the lawn, which is going towards the, the main street.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it here online, looking at the back driveway entrance, I'm thinking that's what that is, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, okay, so back in there. Okay, now on to the kitchen area, is there much things that's gotta be done to bring that up to health code?
No, it's already, uh, being, it's already, it's already pre-evaluated by the Health and Safety Department, or the, uh, my wife can probably speak on that. And so it was previously licensed and approved by the State of Independence. When there was another group in there, they just came out recently and did a preliminary walkthrough. Everything is fine except for we have to complete this process and then complete our, what we call a PRQ with the Department of Education, and then we can move forward with getting licensed for the kitchen. We have to complete a, what is that, the food handler's licensing process. And then that will be all that's required for the kitchen to be licensed.
Okay, thanks.
But it has, it has the, um, grease trap, it has the overhead. We just recently had those updated and, and checked by, um, the city, so we're good there.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
How is, uh, the building and the parking lot lit? Is it fairly well-led at night to kinda discourage, you know, things going on at night?
There, the parking lot is lit, we're installing additional lighting, as I was stating earlier, for our security system. And so there will be motion detector lighting, as well as the city has some fixtures already on the property that we pay to have lit at night. So those things will be functional completely within the next week or so. They're doing the installation of electric, electrical work to upgrade that system now in the building.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, Commissioners, any additional questions?
Just have another question, but it's for the staff.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And any final questions for staff?
Don't get too worried, it's, hopefully it's an easy question. I don't think you guys do this, but I'm just going to ask just in case. Commercial buildings usually have a lighting plan for parking lots. Do, would this type of building fall under that plan, or is it exempt?
Well, I mean, there hasn't been any construction, so I guess that's why we haven't looked at that. If they would have been doing a, I mean, the building, building inspection would consider this a commercial building, even though it's in a residential area. And, you know, we, we, that's one of the things that would be part of a commercial building permit application.
So it falls under a commercial building, but there wasn't any?
But there's no construction, that's why we didn't look at a lighting plan necessarily.
So does that mean it's grandfathered into what it always has been?
I mean, I, I suppose since this PUD has conditions, you could condition lighting if you wanted to add that.
Well, I'm not necessarily concerned about this particular facility, just, I was just wondering. It seemed that'd be a good idea, you know, especially given neighbors' concerns and all that stuff. Because it's not just open on Sundays, right? So that's why I was asking if there was a requirement.
No.
There is not. Okay, we'll talk about that later then. Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I make a motion to approve case twenty-five-one-twenty-five-zero-three rezoning PUD thirteen-sixteen South Osage Street.
Second.
All right, I have a second.
Do we want to add to this about lighting?
I, he said, he stated that they are doing, he stated that they are taking care of the lighting, but there is no, nothing that requires them apparently to do that. So I would think we would just talk about it later.
Do we have a motion on the table?
Yeah. What the motion would be then, please follow forward with your plans on the lighting of the parking lot, which seems kind of ridiculous to put on there, but if you want it on there.
I second that.
Okay.
So we got a motion on top of the motion to amend it.
So would you restate your original motion with the amendment?
Okay, we make a motion to approve case twenty-five-one-twenty-five-zero-three rezoning PUD thirteen-sixteen South Osage Street with recommendations plus adding lighting recommendation by staff.
Re-seconded.
Thank you. Right, any final comments?
We need to know what the amendment was, please. Then we need to vote on the amendment.
All right, so would you please, whoever took that note, read the amendment? On the motion.
Okay.
Sorry, I probably didn't state it very clear. Do you want me to state it more clear, or not?
Well, the, the motion was from Butch.
Okay, I thought I made it.
A motion to
Approve the case.
amend, amend the conditions to, or add a condition for lighting as recommended by staff.
Correct.
That's what you said, yeah.
It's been first and seconded. So I would call for a vote on the emotion with the recommendation added.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and the amendment to add the recommendation to the motion passes. Now I will entertain a motion.
Well, that motion's already out there, so now we just got
We need to vote on the motion itself now. I will call for that vote.
Okay, Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
And Commissioner Young.
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley.
Yes, and the motion for case number two-five-one-two-five-zero-three for rezoning PUD at one-three, south one-six, South Osage Street passes. Thank you very much, best of luck, and I no doubt but be a good neighbor. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to our next case, which is case two-five-two-hundred-zero-eight. It is a special use permit at three-four-one-seven South Denton. And staff, love to hear your report.
This is a application by Mackenzie Lance for a special use permit for approval of a bed and breakfast at thirty-four-seventeen South Denton Road there in the far southwest part of the city, as you can see from the star on our vicinity map here. So this is the immediate notification area within this residential neighborhood, the lots that surround this house on Denton. And of course, as with the other case, this is a single-family residential neighborhood, single-family homes all around, as you can see. And it's also in a residential established neighborhood as conceived of by the comprehensive plan. As far as the property history and characteristics, this proposed bed and breakfast is in a nineteen-fifties-era subdivision ranch, or subdivision of ranch and split-level homes. And the building is a one-car garage house and has been a single-family residence its entire existence. The B and B can accommodate up to four adult guests. The applicants intend to operate on the Airbnb platform. The applicants will be living in the home's basement. The property features a single car-wide, but two-deep car driveway with a, with a parking area off to the north of the main single-family driveway, single-car driveway. This existing pull-off area is gravel and will need to be paved. The rear of the house features a walkout basement, so the, or a walkout door from the basement, so the applicants will, bedroom has access to the outside. The applicant's living space in the basement, again, will have its own bedroom, bathroom, living room, laundry room, and spare bedroom that they use as a gym. The upstairs will be where the main living area is, the shared kitchen, of course, the living room, and then again, the two bedrooms for guests and the bathroom. Analysis, the goal from the city's strategic plan is to increase economic prosperity of the community. The comprehensive plan, its guiding line use principle that's most relevant to this particular situation is to preserve the integrity of existing neighborhoods and the nature of older neighborhoods. There are no apparent historic or archaeological issues with this property. All the utilities are already on site. The property is not with any, within any flood zone, and it's not within the city's identified stream buffer areas. The property will need to meet all applicable permitting and fire and life safety inspection requirements. The applicants are compliant with all applicable provisions of Section fourteen-four-twenty of the UDO. Trash collection will be provided by Ted's Trash. And the applicant will include, which we will see momentarily, a escape route and emergency contact sheet posted on the property. They will provide a carbon monoxide detector, smoke detectors, and the required fire extinguishers and child-proofed electrical outlets. And again, the city does not have any capital improvements projects planned in this immediate vicinity. So this is the floor plan. So the main level is where guests would stay. As far as this bed and breakfast, there's two bedrooms by the upstairs living area and kitchen. Downstairs, the applicant will have their own living area with their, with their bedroom. And then their spare room is actually their gym area, as they indicated. And they have their laundry facilities down here as well. Here's the same floor plans with showing the evacuation arrows, excuse me, for leaving in case of fire. And this is the proposed parking plan. There is an existing gravel parking spot that's off to the north. They will need to pave this, to use this for this bed and breakfast use. So here's the house, and I should have taken the picture a little bit more to the left and you would have seen the gravel drive, sorry about that. There, you can see it behind the trashcan there, a little bit on there on the right. So this is looking north up Denton. And this is south toward Denton, toward the Baptist Church there, toward Thirty-Fifth. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of this special use permit for the following conditions, with the following conditions. Number one, the bed and breakfast shall obtain a business license in accordance with all city codes and comply with Section five, Article one, Chapter five of the city code. The business license number shall be listed on all advertisements on the online platforms. And number two, the business must comply with all safety and other standards required by Section fourteen-four-twenty of the city code. The bed and breakfast must comply with Article three, Chapter five of the city code. Four, the bed and breakfast shall secure refuge collection services from a collector who is licensed, operating within the City of Independence, which will be Ted's Trash in their case. The bed and breakfast shall provide the following, a map to identify the escape routes, carbon monoxide detection, child-proof electrical outlets, emergency contact information for the owner and manager, fire extinguishers as required by code, smoke detectors as required by code. The B and B will have only four adults at a time. And the gravel pad north of the driveway must be paved, and there will be no street parking permitted on this narrow street that is South Denton Road. So that completes my presentation, I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
All right, Brian, could you quickly explain the main difference between approving a bed and breakfast versus a short-term rental?
Of course, the, the main difference between the bed and breakfast and the short-term rental is, of course, the applicant can live in, or lives in the house and provides services to the guests while they're there in breakfast or whatever. But as far as our process goes, of course, it's a special use permit process, so it goes through you all and then through the two readings at council in order to get approved, unlike the short-term rental, where you, of course, are the decision-making body in most cases.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Where did you come up with eight total guests? How'd you get that?
That, what's, that, that was, was an assumption that there might be small children, but there'd be only, there's two bedrooms, so there'd only be two adults per bedroom.
But I, that, even with two adults, I mean, then somebody might be sleeping in the family room to get up to eight, so that's why, I don't like the eight. I mean,
So, so
that, that's something I don't like, I don't like the eight on there.
Okay, well, we could, we could strike that, that, because it's actually, with a bed and breakfast, it's actually, unlike with the short-term rental, it's not part of code. It just happens to be written into the PUD, so that could be removed.
So if I hear you right, it's about the number of adults, and if people have children, there's nothing against them bringing children?
The way it's written i- in the PUD, yes.
Okay. Any additional questions for staff? Okay.
One more question.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
So I, I'm going to go to the driveway.
Okay.
You're saying only three cars, but you have not taken in consideration that the owner probably has two cars, so I'm having a little problem there. Plus, the driveway is not going to be wide enough if you're going to have handicap access, because I can see it right now, it's only as wide as, according to the picture I see, it's only about as wide as the driveway, it may only be ten feet wide. So I'm a little hesitant on approving this because of the width of the driveway, because if you don't have handicapped people, I mean, it looks like you can have handicapped go in there. The driveway's too narrow, they're going to be getting out in the grass and stumbling and falling and things like that. So if we're going to have a business, something like this for the bed and breakfast, it needs to have wide enough driveway to consider a handicapped person going down the driveway on both sides of the cars. So I am probably going to make a recommendation, this driveway's got to be at least thirty feet wide and the full length from the garage all the way out to the street.
Okay.
Okay.
Any additional questions for staff?
Who has access to the garage?
The applicant did not indicate that, you, you can ask her. I mean, she's probably going to, since she's living there, going to reserve the garage area for her own vehicle.
Okay, we'll ask. And a quick question. Does your four adult, eight people include the people that live there as well?
No, no, this is the guest count.
All right, any additional questions? All right, I'm going to invite the applicant to come forward. All right, and just remind her to state your name and your address.
My name is Mackenzie Lance, and I live at three-four-one-seven South Denton Road.
And I'm just going to ask you to speak as loud as you can. Yeah, you might need to push that down a little bit. Just pick up the whole thing and move it down.
Okay.
See if that's better for you.
Yes, I'll go ahead and answer the question about the garage. Excuse me, the guests would not have access to the garage. There is a door from the kitchen that leads to the basement, and that would be locked. The access to the garage from the interior is downstairs.
So what, if your guests are there in the driveway and you need to leave, then they have to move their car?
Yes, we, we do have a plan to pave that gravel space, so we, there's going to be additional space for at least one other car. I was not aware of the no street parking allowed, so that is something that we have to consider and discuss further.
And so, I mean, that's, I'm glad you understand that, do you, if If we pass us with a motion that that driveway needs to be a certain size, you need to agree to that?
Right, yes.
In order you can do that. Okay, just making sure you understand that.
All right, what else would you like us to know about this project? I guess start with this question. Why a B&amp;B versus a short-term rental?
Yeah, I know the term "house hacking" is kind of prevalent in the real estate world. I'm big into real estate in general. That's why I do full-time. I work in corporate real estate at my job. But what got us interested in B&amp;Bs specifically is we went on a trip to New York a few years ago, and we just stayed in B&amp;Bs along the way, along our road trip, and just one night stays in people's homes. And we just thought the idea was really cool, and we decided we wanted to do one ourselves.
Okay, what else should we know about your project?
I think Brian summed up everything pretty well. I don't have any additional comments, but I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
How will you advertise?
On the Airbnb platform, there won't be any other sort of advertisement.
Any questions for the applicant?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
So the spare room, is that underneath the garage?
Yes.
So it's a suspended garage floor?
Yes.
Okay. I was wondering, I was going to say, because the way your drawings looked, looked like it was under the garage, and I wasn't sure. I was going to say, usually, that's probably what, a '60s-built house?
1952, I believe.
1952? That's awesome, it's got a suspended garage floor.
Yeah.
Okay. My biggest thing is going to be the parking, like I said, so that's going to be the biggest thing here. So plus, because you've got to have room for a handicap, too, and that's why I'm saying it's got to be wide enough so somebody can get out of the car and walk with a handicap down. Because I mean, it looks like to me, your interest is okay for a handicap, because it looks like it's only one step up, so I'm thinking that's good for a handicap, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of this I'll ask again, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Anybody present that'd like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Okay, I do not see any. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Case 25-200-08, Special Use Permit, 3417 South Denton, with changes to six and seven on the recommendations. Six will say four adults, total of six, six total guests at one time. And the gravel pad, remove that and say at least a 30-foot-wide driveway from street to driveway.
Okay, staff clarification? Can we limit total guests?
Straight to garage. Try, straight to garage. Straight to garage.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to read that back? We have a motion with conditions?
Say a motion with changes to number six and seven on Item 6, limit to four adults, six total people. And then number seven is to have a 30-foot-wide paved driveway from street to garage.
Correct.
Right, I have a motion with conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I think it was Dan or Virginia, one of them.
Not her.
Virginia. All right.
Commissioner Nesbit?
All right, I'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley?
Yes. And the motion passes with conditions for Case Number 25200-08, Special Use Permit for 3417 South Denton. Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to let us go out of order for and just go ahead and do the short-term rental, if that pointed privilege with my role, if that's okay?
Want to make a motion to alter the?
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we switch the order and go ahead and do the case number listed last.
Second.
I have a first and a second.
Who was the first?
I'm not sure the chair can actually.
I know, I don't know that I can either.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we move Case 25-400-09, Short-Term Rental, up to our next case.
All right.
Second.
And I have a second from Commissioner Young. And I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero, Case Number 25. Actually, to move the order. So we're going to go ahead and discuss next Case Number 25400-09, Short-Term Rental on North Vista Drive, and what staff member will be presenting.
Yes, I'll be presenting this application for short-term rental. So the applicant, Marshall Croce with Croce Rental LLC, submitted an application for approval of a short-term rental unit at 1308 North Vista Drive in northern northeast Independence. Here's a slide showing the notification area map for the subject site, a zoning map for the subject site and the surrounding area. The property is surrounded by a single-family neighborhood north of 24 Highway. Property characteristics of the subject site, so this is a lot, the Farview Heights subdivision, recorded in 1959, it's Lot 364. The parcel is about 10,000 square feet in size. County records indicate that dwelling was constructed in 1961 and furthermore indicate that the structure is 1,050 square feet in size. The structure is a ranch-style house with a gable roof, and the property was annexed into the city in 1962, so after it had already been recorded at the county level and constructed. Here's a floor plan of the proposed short-term rental. The floor plan shows three bedrooms, a fire safety plan for the short-term rental, and a parking plan. The applicant has indicated the driveway for the parcel is wide enough for four cars, and a map showing the nearest short-term rental to this site. It's well over the density limitation and the site separation requirement for short-term Staff recommends approval of the short-term rental application with standard conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license, shall remit transient guest tax to the city, comply with all safety and other standards established by the Development Code. The maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to six persons in total. The number of bedrooms shall be three. Noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated. The Good Neighbor Guidelines evacuation noted, evacuation plan, excuse me, and other notices properly posted. And the property must pass an inspection by the Fire Prevention Division. That concludes my presentation for the short-term rental application, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, any questions for staff, commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit?
Hey, Gabe, I'm sitting here looking at this picture online. They got a truck parked in it right now. I don't think that driveway is wide enough for four cars. It looks like it, I know it's got, looks like it's got, maybe it has a 16-foot garage door, but we need to start thinking more about handicap stuff. If somebody gets out, this one also has got, it looks like a ditch off to the right, maybe a little bit fall off of the driveway. Did you look at that when you were out there? Do you know?
So staff were out there at the site. I personally did not notice a ditch.
Well, I'm just sitting there, it's not much of one, but I'm just saying, because that truck is, right now, the wheel is sitting right on the edge, so if you got out, you're going to be getting out on the grass. Like I say, I'm starting where we, we've got to look at more like handicap stuff if we're going to get these short-term rentals and things like that approved. So I'm at the point, just like the last one, the driveway's going to have to be wide enough to have four cars, to open the doors, and get handicapped around it. And I'm thinking we're having some problems here, and I don't know if we need to update some of our codes or something on this stuff or not.
Yeah, you raised good points. So the standard parking area, a stall in a commercial parking lot, for instance, is nine feet wide by 18 feet long. So a two-car-wide driveway theoretically, under those regulations for the design of parking stalls, it would indicate that a two-car-wide driveway would be 18 feet wide.
What about the handicapped parking spot?
A handicap stall abuts an access aisle that, for a van-accessible handicap parking stall, it abuts an access aisle eight feet in wide, eight feet wide, rather, excuse me, so about double the width of a standard parking stall.
So you're saying, you're saying 17 feet wide for one parking stall?
That's correct. For one handicap parking stall, the access aisle and the parking stall together would be about 17 feet wide, yeah.
Okay. I mean, this one here's got steps going up. We don't have any regulations as to handicap access on short-term rentals, do we?
City Code does not have regulations pertaining to ADA accessibility for short-term rentals, to my knowledge.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I mean, it's something we're probably going to look into, but I'm big on the parking area, because I mean, this is a circle driveway. If they even try to park, they might have one parking spot in the front, the way I'm looking at it, because it's a circle, a half-circle moon.
So there's a couple ways of expanding the parking area. One method would be to increase the width of the approach. The approach of a driveway is the area from the paved street area to the property line that's in the right-of-way. The area within the right-of-way of a driveway is called the approach.
Okay.
So that would be what you referred to earlier as from the street to the garage. That'd be increasing the width of the approach. Another method is to add an additional paved surface. Some people refer to it as a bump-out. It's a additional paved area at a 45-degree angle from the property line. So adding a quote-unquote bump-out, I'm just using that for shorthand, could increase the width of the impervious area for, to assist with ADA accessibility.
Okay. And I'm sitting right, I'm looking at this online here, have we not, you guys not taken pictures when you're at fronts or anything?
So the, we've decided to use an aerial image for the site, and I'm more than happy to add a.
No, no, that's fine, but I mean, I see this has got the cutout coming to the one side. I mean, my opinion is, is that needs to be probably straightened up to give extra on either side of the driveway, probably just the one side to give enough space, another like three-foot or four-foot area added to it to give it enough room.
So would you recommend a specific width, like 18 feet of width?
Well, like the last one, I said 30. I mean, this one here, because I mean, I'm sitting there trying to figure, they probably don't have 30 to give here, so that's why I'm saying that.
There is one additional regulation pertaining to the impervious coverage for front yards. So keep in mind that the city limits the amount of pavement in your front yard to 40% of the front yard area.
Right. Now, this one's pretty long, it's got a little bit of side.
I will, I will say that 30 feet is pretty wide, but I don't see it unreasonable to request an increase to the width of the parking area, because I believe that is a good concern to raise.
Okay, thank you.
So let me clarify, though. The measurement for two-car wide is nine feet by two, so 18 feet.
The measurement for a one-car parking stall is 9 feet by 18 feet.
Right. So two side-by-side would be 18 feet?
Correct, yeah.
So these conditions aren't on anybody else to have a wider driveway. And if that is the dimension, then that meets the requirement for two of the parking spaces and two behind it from a literal square feet, correct?
That would be my interpretation of the City Code.
Okay, thank you. All right, I invite the applicant to come forward. And are you both going to speak? So just speak one at a time, and first one to speak, just your name and your address, please.
Okay, Wanda Croce.
Why don't you go ahead and move that microphone down? There you go.
Wanda Croce, 2021 North Blue Mills Road.
All right. And what would, do you like us to know about your project?
Well, we have several long-term rentals, and so we wanted to do one of them, the short-term. We thought it might be more lucrative, and we enjoy meeting people, so that would be good.
All right, sir, do you want to speak?
Marshall Croce, 400 South Borgman, Buckner, Missouri.
You might need to move that microphone up.
I don't, mainly, I don't, we wanted to get the kids involved. My kids are old enough, they can help mow and clean. With the driveway, I would almost rather be interested in having like two in the driveway instead of four. I don't think it should be widened, like the driveway's appropriate for that house. I think it would look weird if we were trying to make it wider. But if it, it is tight. If you put four cars in there, they're tight to each other. But if you had a single car, cars can go too deep. If it was a truck, it might start to stick out in the road. I would rather see it, okay, we limit it to three cars, like two in the driveway, one in the street, rather than stipulations on how we're going to handle that.
Okay. What else would you like us to know? Anything?
It would be on Airbnb for applications.
Okay, great. Any questions for them from commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
So this, this house has been used as a rental right now, is that what you're saying, or is it?
Yeah, it was a long-term rental.
Long-term rental, okay. Now, what I'm getting at is that you're changing this up to a, more like a business, and that's why I'm thinking for handicap purposes for people, we need to make it a little bit better for handicap access. I know, I'm sitting there looking at your driveway, it looks like to me you got the 16-foot-wide garage door, and it looks like to me it goes from garage door to garage door going out, so you're probably sitting there at 16 feet wide. I mean, yes, it's wide enough for cars, yes. I'm just saying for handicap purposes, I'd like to see it a little bit wider. That's, that's all I'm saying, because that's what I'm looking at now. And since we're trying to make it more in a business, because you're going to be rotating people probably weekly, and that's why you'd look at things like that to make it help for people who have handicaps. And that, that's a good, well, you got the steps going up, so that's one drawdown against that, so I'm just telling you what I think.
And Commissioner Nesbit, one additional item that, so staff was just discussing really quick, that there is a garage attached to the dwelling as well. So if the applicant were to permit the use of the garage as well, then you've got ample parking for two cars, potentially in the garage, two cars in the driveway. And keep in mind that City Code does permit one additional parking space allotted on the street for short-term rentals. But that doesn't detract from, from anything else that you've, you know, brought up about the ADA accessible.
Thank you. Any other questions for them? Okay, thank you. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of this case? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition?
My name's Ed Monaco. I live at thirteen-ten Vista Drive. I live next door. I don't really have any real opposition per se.
Just a comment?
I'm just concerned about, since it's going to be on Airbnb, it is a neighborhood full of single, you know, it's a single-family neighborhood. There are a lot of kids running around in the streets all the time. And I'm just concerned about the constant flow of people in and out all the time. That's my only concern.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and invite the client, uh, the applicant to come back up. And would you like to address the citizens' concern on children in the neighborhood, noise, things like that?
Not really sure what to say.
Okay.
There's a noise monitoring device, so like if it, if it's a noise issue, I, I think that would be caught early.
How far away from the, um, short-term rental do, would you live or somebody that would be?
Twenty minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, just, just south of Buckner where we live, so.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And commissioners, any final questions to staff?
Yeah, sort of. On this, on the disability thing, Butch's point is well-made and, but there are certain regulations that would have to come into play, if I'm not mistaken, because states and local municipalities have their own rules. So I would think, before we could really say anything about setting a condition or requirement about handicap parking, that y'all would be tasked with finding out what, how we would meet those and what the conditions would be. This house may not actually be on a property appropriate for, or big enough to, to do a handicap-accessible driveway. And I don't think that should limit their ability to have a short-term rental. But if, i- if it's, if it's able to, then maybe we should have some type of requirement for that. So, but I just don't think we have quite enough information yet and, uh, I would think it'd be appropriate for you folks to take that on. I don't, i- if I need to make a motion to do that, I, I will, but.
Before we do that, um, counselor, would you have any recommendation?
I wondered when you were going to contact me about this.
There you go.
I think the, I think any conversation about handicap parking needs to be taken out of this equation at this point. If this is something that the council wants to address in terms of changing the code for short-term rentals, they can do that. But this is something brand-new that we'd be introducing into the discussion on short-term rentals. That's not fair to anybody else that we've been discussing for the past two, three, four, or five years. This is a council issue that needs a code change.
Thank you very much. Point well taken. All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, I'm going to call for the roll, please. Or I'm going to call for a motion.
Chair, I make a motion that we approve case twenty-five-four-hundred-zero-nine, short-term rental thirteen-oh-eight North Vista Drive.
All right, and do I have a second?
I second.
All right, I heard Virginia first, yes.
I got one more question.
Yes.
Now, staff, they have not been operating as a short-term rental at, at this time, have they?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero for case number two-five-four-hundred-zero-nine, short-term rental at thirteen-oh-eight North Vista Drive. All right, and we will finally move on to our illustrious Director Tom Skennell and, uh, UDO amendment change. Um, does anybody need for us to take a short break?
I'll be quick.
All right, I will call for a four-minute break.
Take five.
It identifies proposed building types, um, building location, land uses, uh, provides guidance on the design of buildings, outlines, uh, public open space. And up there is a, um, kind of a snapshot that was included in the independent square master plan, which after it was adopted, it is located on the city's website for anybody who wants to, to, uh, read that. It is un, under the community development department where we keep all of our other, uh, plans and planning documents. So the independence, uh, square master plan, um, it had an implementation plan. And it had, uh, as part of that, um, there was a category with a couple to-do items underneath it, uh, under the aligned city policies. One of which has a check mark next to it, that is adopt this, um, master plan. Again, that was adopted by the city council in December of twenty-twenty-four. The other to-do item that was included in that implementation plan is to establish a downtown district. Uh, that is what we are discussing this evening. The plan outlined that, that this downtown district should implement the recommendations of the square master plan and that it should, uh, create a set of standards, uh, that closely align with the master plan to, um, that fosters a streamlined development or redevelopment to encourage reinvestment in the square. So I mentioned, uh, special purpose districts, I want to kind of go over that, what that is. Uh, think of this as a tool in your toolbox. Uh, our current HSQ is a tool in our toolbox. Um, it may be a little rounded instead of a squared-up screw, screwdriver. Um, and the, uh, tool that we are replacing it with is a five-in-one or a ten-in-one screwdriver that has the different sized bits for all the different types of screws that you want to, um, tackle in what you're trying to address. So a special purpose district, um, again, they are tools for dealing with special si- situation. Um, accompli- accomplishing, accomplishing, sorry, it's late. Uh, special planning or zoning go, goals rather than applying broad zoning regulations. Uh, these are base zoning districts and, uh, that they, that are designed to facilitate specific types of development or redevelopment. Uh, they often provide a little more flexibility in regulations than what the standard zoning districts do. In some cases, they, they increase it, but, uh, uh, they are tailored to what they are trying to accomplish. So diving into the HSQ, it's divided into, uh, seven broad sections, intent and applicability, allowed uses, uh, talks about mixed-use and non-residential development standards, also outlines development standards for residential development, uh, site design standards, streetscape, landscaping, screening, as well as signs. So all of those are included in this one zoning district. Instead of, uh, uh, the way that our, our regular zoning districts are, are set up, it's just one district and then you're referring to several different sections. This has all of the reg, the regulations that apply to the historic square under one section of the UDO. The historic square, it, uh, the framework for the historic square is that it establishes sub-districts to regulate the land uses, um, development standards such as parking, building setbacks, building height, site design, open space, landscaping, street scape features, those types of things. And as you can see on, on the screen, there are three, uh, different sub-districts. There's the historic square, which is, uh, highlighted on the screen in, in red, which is those properties immediately around the, uh, Truman Courthouse. Then you go to the purple color, that is the downtown transition area. And that, uh, goes out, uh, further, essentially from Truman on the north to Walnut on the south, um, Pleasant on the west and Nolan on the, on the east. And then down in the, uh, southeast corner of the square, you have the downtown neighborhood. That is where those, um, existing residences all already e- exist. It's part of the, the master plan, they wanted to plan around that and, um, incorporate more residential there or, um, add to what is there. So the different sub-dis, districts, the historic square, it's intended to preserve and reinforce the traditional development pattern around the, um, Truman Courthouse. Um, this district emphasizes, uh, active first-floor commercial, uh, spaces, could be residential above, but it's, uh, really trying to main, maintain what we have around there and add, add to that. The transition zone, uh, is intended to enable a variety of different uses, could have commercial, mixed-use, uh, even some higher-density residential, um, in a compact, walkable setting such as the square. The transition zone will tend to have a little more flexibility to accommodate the different, uh, development types. Um, and then you have the downtown neighborhood, which is, uh, an area to provide, uh, broader housing opportunities such as townhomes, row houses, um, those types of, um, residential uses. such as townhomes, row houses, those types of residential uses. So in the Historic Square District, it does include a consolidated use table. On the screen, you can, you can see the different sub-districts and the little snapshot of the different types of uses. Similar to how the U D O is set up, it allows uses allowed by, by right, uses that are subject to conditions, and then uses that are allowed through special use permits. And so we set this up so that we can follow the same typology, the same standards for consistency, how we set up the use tables in the rest of the U D O. Moving to residential development, again, this is to promote a variety of housing types in the downtown neighborhood sub-districts. It includes the standards for different building types. It regulates lot size, setbacks, heights. It does provide standards for A D Us in existing buildings only. So if there is an existing detached garage that, if the H S Q was in, in place, that existing garage could be converted to a A D U. It also allows for the conversion of interior spaces into A D Us. This slide shows some of the residential building standards. As I mentioned, we have the lot size, maximum height, setbacks, those types of things that, that would apply to the H S Q zoning district. Accessory dwellings, again, this is to ensure that we have compliance with the life safety codes, limits the number per lot, addresses, the interior versus detached size of the unit, parking spaces, all those things related to accessory dwelling units. Switching gears to the mixed use and non-residential uses. Again, the H S Q establishes the design standards based on the specific block. So those blocks around the Historic Square would have some slightly different regulations in regard, than say the downtown transition. And again, and this is intended to preserve the historical design pattern around the historic, around the actual Historic Square. And as mentioned before, the transitional areas have a little more flexibility. Again, it's tailored to a broader set of uses, mixed use, higher density residential, as well as non-residential uses. Similar to the residential development standards, the mixed use and non-residential has this table that outlines lot size, required setbacks, building height, massing and facade composition. So that is how the building looks and, and feels. Wall plane articulation. So that is so that you have offsets to, to walls. You have a base, a middle and a top of a building. And that you also have window transparency. So you have glass that's inviting. It also allows mixed use and hotels to have a height bonus of two additional floors for up to six stories in, in height. Some of the elements that are addressed in regards to mixed use and, and non-residential buildings, and I kind of went, went through these. But talk about the alleyway access and, and activation. We, we have several alleys that are uninviting. And one of the things that came out of the, the master plan is to create that excitement there where businesses could use those string lights across there. They could set tables out there for, for eating or for enjoying the alley space. It's real, other communities have, have done this and they've done a really good job of activating those alley spaces. As mentioned before, the architectural materials, there's allowed primary materials like brick and, and stone, what you typically see up on the, up on the square. And then secondary materials, there's the, the regulations on where those secondary materials can be located, how much the secondary materials can, can be on a building, that facade composition, the base, the body and the, and the upper top glass, you know, to see into these buildings, entry features, signage, landscaping, screening, street trees, everything is included within the Historic Square District. Open space, one thing that is unique to the proposed amendment is that it does call for the, the provision of new open space. And that is a percentage of the building square, square footage. And again, that would apply to new developments. So if you had an existing development or, or existing spaces up, up there, they wouldn't necessarily have to provide the, the outdoor open spaces. But again, the H, this H S Q outlines how that is set up, the size of that, the standards for those spaces, all of those things are included within this district. Parking arrangement. The proposed H S Q states that no parking, no off-street parking is required for non-residential use less than 4,000 square feet. This is a change from our current H S Q, which has a 10,000 square foot provision or area until you have to provide off-street parking. So it took parking into consideration, requires the parking to be located behind the buildings, looking for access to be shared, off alleys, possibly even shared parking or utilizing public parking. It introduces parking maximums to prevent overparking. The reason why you, you, you do this, the ground on the square, you can't add more of it, unfortunately. So you want to try, you want to maximize as much as, as you can for building space for active uses rather than parking lots like what we currently have. So in summary, this proposed amendment would replace the existing H S Q district that's in the U D O. This district will be a simpler tool of regulating than regular zoning districts. It is tailored to implement the recommendations of the Independent Square Master Plan and creates a set of development standards that align with the objectives of that plan, which is to preserve and enhance the unique character of the square. As mentioned, the H S Q outlines development standards for residential, non-residential and mixed use development. And it also fosters a streamlined development review process that encourages reinvestment instead of deterring it. So that concludes my presentation. I'll take any questions.
All right, several. One, prior to a vote, do I need to excuse myself since I served on this subcommittee?
I don't think so, because that was part of developing the master plan. The, this U D O amendment came out of the master plan after it was adopted.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
You would agree? Thank you. This has a lot of slides with bullet points. So in my own summary, knowing the master plan, knowing the design or desire for the square and its future, keeping the historical value, et cetera. Is, could this be similar in our thinking to just understand to, for example, the Inglewood Overlay District where we put together a set of conditions with that protection in mind of what it can be in the future, but limiting it to keeping it historically preservable? I mean, is there anything that we're giving up in order to, to make it vibrant again?
I don't think there's anything that, that, that we're giving up. In fact, this is, should make it easier to do those vibrant things or those creative ways to revitalize the square that we've never had before.
And then, just looking at the pictures, the goal would be that most of the parking would, the buildings would all be up front, most of the parking would all be behind. Is that correct?
That is the goal that was outlined within that, within that plan. And that is what was written into this H S Q district.
And then my final question for now is, the whole master plan, does this incorporate the tear down of this building and the police and green space, et cetera? Or is it literally more of the buildings?
So the, so the master plan accounted for that. This H S Q, if it is, if it is adopted and put into the, the U D O and property owners, after it is put into the U D O, come forward to the city and say, hey, I want to develop my parking lot into something, a mixed-use building or a non-residential building. They would go through that rezoning process first. And then if they are successful with that and their plans meet all of the parameters outlined in the H S Q, then they could move to construct what they had shown as part of that rezoning and put that on, on the ground now.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, opening it up for more questions.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit.
Okay. Rick, as of right now, so you're saying nobody can come in and do that, what you just said, develop an area? I mean, I'm thinking that's wrong. You're just trying to say what they can put in there now. Is that what you're trying to do with this U D O?
So this, so currently, the, the square is zone C2.
Okay, that's just, that's just the red part, right?
Actually, the entire square, and I'll go back. So pretty much everything that you see on that map there, up on the screen, is for the most part, zone C2. C2 has its own requirements for building height, setbacks. Then you have to flip to another section that outlines all the landscaping that's entailed, signage that's involved, parking, all of those things. With the H S Q district, we have put all of those things that are in various chapters of the U D O into one district. So they're only looking in one place to see what all the rules are. And those rules, rather than applying broadly across the entire city, it's more tailored to the his, the historic character of, of the square.
So basically, you're saying if you want to build something here, you got to build it this way or you can't build it. It's what you're saying with this U D O. Even though we have this broad spectrum that they could follow under and they could found, and they usually do find all the things to do. But we're saying, we're going to limit you to, if you want to develop here, you have to follow this aspect instead of what we already have out there. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. That's, that's what I'm saying. So we're changing the rules in this little area here. And we're going to change how we want it to look. It's what we're saying.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. But I, I don't understand why we only have, when I look at your map only for residential, you only got that little corner down there on the, I'm going to say, the southeast corner. How come we're not incorporating more downtown neighborhoods, is what I'm saying?
And keep in mind that the transition area, let me back up a little bit. So this map came out of the master plan. And as part of the, the master plan, planning process, when they brought the community and stakeholders together, there was a lot of conversation, many, many meetings, many open houses where they were talking about the different land uses. And ultimately, it was decided to preserve the downtown neighborhood area that's shown in yellow in the southeast on the screen. However, but they created the transition zone and think of this as flexible where, this thing even work.
Well, I see the purple.
Say here, this could be maybe a multifamily project there. Or this could be a set of row houses. The transition, the transition zone has that flexibility built in where it can be residential, mixed use and non-residential.
Because right now, everything is zone C2.
Everything is zone C2.
So we cannot do that in C2, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. But if they wanted to, they could come have it rezoned if they wanted to. But you're trying to rezone it to, I guess, are we rezoning to U D O then? Is that what we're doing?
No, so we are, so this is just putting into the, the U D O a revised and updated H S Q district. So if developers come to, excuse me, come to the city and say they want to put multifamily here or townhomes here, we can direct them to, if the H S Q is in place, direct them to, hey, rezone this to H S Q. This is what it does for, for you. You have these setbacks versus C2, which has a much bigger setback.
Correct. I understand that. My question is then going to be, is there any tax incentives with this U D A amendment? Or is that going to, is that nothing, nothing to do with taxes?
There's nothing to do with taxes. There's no incentives associated with this. Again, this is replacing your worn-out stripped Phillips head screwdriver with a brand-new five-in-one or 10-in-one screwdriver that can tackle a variety of different tasks.
Now, I'm going to ask a question. Is there any developers looking at doing this?
So as part of the Square Master Plan, the city had, had partnered with the master developer and the master developers working with the city manager's office on, you know, working to attract development to the square.
Okay. But right now, we don't have anybody.
Correct.
Okay. And then like what she just said, the police in this building, is there, I guess, plans still to tear this down or is it what, has that been moved forward?
So yesterday, the council did hold kind of a roundtable to, to discuss a variety of different topics. I wasn't able to go to that meeting, but one of the topics was future geobon issues.
Right. Okay. Okay. That's just, and I'm guessing we're going ahead with Nolan Road to a single lane? Is that what this looks like here to me?
So as part of the, the master plan, they, there was a variety of different concepts discussed. And, and again, this is just a master plan ultimately.
Well, master plan is usually what you want done. That's why you have a master plan.
Yeah. But they wanted to make Nolan Road more of a tree-lined street. I, and I don't recall them saying it was going to be choked down to a two-lane road. You can have a tree-lined street with.
We've had that happen before and that didn't go over very well. All the trees got cut back down because they got in the way of everything. That's just like the. That's just like the square. You put the trees in, we take them out. We put the trees in, we take them out. I, I just don't understand why we haven't learned our lesson yet, but, okay.
All right. Anyone else with questions? Commissioner Young, anything? Commissioner O'Neil?
Hi. My impression is that this is going to loosen up the regulations in regard to zoning to make it a little easier to develop some of these areas that we're talking about here on the map, is that correct?
Yes, so with, without this, a developer who would come forward to develop on the square would have to jump through several different hoops from rezonings, possible variances, a lot of different things. This would simplify that by all the regulations are contained within the H S Q district, and again, they're, they're tailored to fit that urban environment, smaller setbacks, building height, those types of things that should make it simpler to develop and redevelop upon the square.
So we're, we're not talking about specific projects here that, that are being talked about as far as like tearing down this building, et cetera, et cetera. We're only talking about allowing a, a looser zoning situation-
Yes.
-to make those kind of things possible.
Yes.
Well said, Commissioner. All right, Commissioner Ashbaugh, anything? Commissioner Ferguson, anything else? Commissioner Nesbit? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know what, I do have one more question for you, just to clarify, just to clarify. I know we've always said we have a historic square, or the Truman Historic District. This is adding to this code, a completely new section specifically called H S Q that we can send developers to specifically about the area that you showed us on the map.
Correct, yes.
So we're, we're voting to recommend to send this on through our recommendation?
Yeah, the planning commission makes a recommendation to the city council stating your position on adding or replacing the existing H S Q district with the new H S Q district. So that, as we're talking to developers, we can go, this is already, if this passes, if council passes this, we can go, this is, this is passed, this is, this is in the U D O.
Okay, thank you.
Is staff, is staff going to do a separate presentation to us?
No, Tom was the presentation.
Okay.
Direct, excuse me, Director Skinell.
I answered a vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we approve case number 25175-zero-three, the U D O amendment number seventy-four, Historic Square District, report order.
Yes.
You never did your, open it up for comments and close it.
Correct. Would you sideline that motion for now?
I would sideline it, yes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, anyone who'd like to speak in favor or opposition? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor or opposition? All right, seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. All right, now I will entertain a motion, sir.
I'm so moved.
Sorry, and I have a second. All right, I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
No.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes. And the motion passes six to zero?
Five to one.
Five to one.
Excuse me, apologize, five to one. Five yes votes, votes. It does pass for case number two-five-one-seven-five-zero-three, U D O amendment number seventy-four for the Historic Square District, H S Q. Anything for the final order?
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we'd like to make a recommendation that staff look into the driveways for rent, short-term rentals and be, be bed and breakfasts, so that they're get more handicap or something, they can look into that for us and come up with a recommendation maybe to city council. So, I mean, I know we can't do it, but you need to do something like that so we can, we, since, we need to do that.
What's the process? Does it report back to us or just go directly to council?
I think what we can do is work something up and then present it back to the planning commission.
What I would recommend is that we just make sure that we're ADA complain if that's a requirement.
Well, yes, that's the whole thing. You got to follow the state laws and whatever local laws there's going to be, but-
I mean, since, since it's a bed and breakfast, it's more like a business, they're in and out every day, a short-term rental, I mean, it's usually weekends or something like that. So that's why I'm saying, we just need to make sure we're covering, covering everything.
Okay, and I have my original thing about the parking, the lighting.
Yes, sir.
If we're going to allow a, a larger commercial type organization to be in there, wouldn't we want to have some type of lighting plan for that?
Yes, so under the U D O, it has a separate lighting standards, and it does on the applicability, if they have a site plan and they're, then the lighting standards do apply that the, that the city has, so that would in- include the lighting plan, making sure that the new lights meet the U D O regulations, make sure we get, we have the proper wattage not to exceed what the U D O outlines, so all of those things. With a site plan, we would review those, those lighting photometric plans.
So, so, so you're saying you already have it?
We don't have it, no.
But that's what you-
This is, this is the first step tonight was, you know, just to go through the rezoning, but as they go, go forward to build out their project, they will have to submit a site plan, and as part of that, they will need a photometrics plan so that we can ensure that lighting's not spilling over to some property.
Exactly, that's, that's the concern of well-lit but not disturbing the neighborhood.
Correct, yes. And so within the U D O, it outlines maximum wattage, the foot candles spread across the parking lot, the foot candles at, at the property line, foot candles adjacent to residential, all those things are outlined within the U D O.
Okay.
Hey, Rick, does that count also for playgrounds? Or do we have anything like that for nighttime keep? I mean, I don't know, that's up my, I was just wondering.
Only if they would, playgrounds tend not to involve structures, and so then we generally don't get a site plan associated with that. But in the case of the church, it is a building, they're modifying the uses, so we will get a site plan, so not exactly a hundred percent sure, but I'm kind of leaning towards on, on playgrounds, probably not, we would not get that photometrics.
Well, I'm just trying to keep people from after hours climbing the fence and going to do it. If it was lit up, somebody might be able to see that or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, very nice to have you join us tonight.
Yes.
Thank you for letting us move you to the end. I know it kept you up later.
I objected, I objected, but nobody he- heard it, so.
I don't think you got a vote.
I know I don't.
Yes. I just want to remind everybody, I will be gone the next meeting, so Eric, you have pre-meeting with Rick, and, and then we'll chair the meeting. So, good luck with that. I'm telling. All right, we are adjourned, thank you so much, guys. And happy birthday, once again, Virginia and Eric.